I'm gonna show what you're in.
All right, good evening, everybody. We're here for our committee as a whole meeting. You wanna call? I'm gonna call the meeting order, and can you take the role, please, Aaron?
Councilmember Schmidt.
Yeah.
Councilmember Dietrich.
Here.
Councilmember Pointer.
Here.
Councilmember Gray.
Here.
And Councilmember Scherbering is absent.
Yes, he had a wedding this weekend. Somebody's got a birthday, too, don't they? Ryan, do you have a birthday, Gibson?
Not July 3rd.
On the 7th, you have a birthday. That's who's the birthday is. So let's wish Linda early happy birthday. So I thought I saw somewhere that somebody had a birthday, so I apologize. All right, um, first thing, we have a capital improvement plan review.
So basically, what I have got for you is our capital improvement plan. Kind of a living doctor. Things are changing, but right now, our biggest focus is we get ready to go into budget season. Here's one of the projects that are looking at the next year, and where are the projects going to be at for the next two to five years? Two to five years, they can be moved around a little bit, depending on what's going on. The next year projects are the ones that are kind of scheduled, or are deemed to be a priority in economic development. And so tonight, what we've asked to do is have the department heads go through their capital group plan. So they will present that information to you. Since the first thing starts off with is administration. I'll start off, one of the things, as we do our capital group plan, the only thing that goes into capital group plans are projects that are $10,000 or more. So if it's $5,000 or whatever, we don't put that in the capital group plan, it's just a project. So first thing, we do need to update our cloud server. Our server is coming to the end of its life. We don't need a physical server here anymore. So we are gonna transition to an online server with what we have. That'll save us quite a bit of money. But it gives us that redundancy, so we have things backed up. I have it in the fiscal year '25 budget, it may get pushed back to next year's budget. We just went through and updated all the firewalls because they were out of date, they need to be done then. That was expensive. We didn't budget for the firewalls before the server update. So the firewalls were more important to me to get done this year. So we'll look at things towards the end of this fiscal year, see where we're at, whether or not we can get the server taken care of that time or not.
And the firewalls protect us against people getting into our system. Um, you know, and with the information that we have on our, on our software, social security numbers, and routing numbers and all that, we wanna make sure we're current and keeping that information safeguarded.
Well, this'll be an offsite.
This'll be on the cloud.
Right now, we have.
Virtual, virtual and corrected and all that.
We have a big one in the back right now, but when we have counter outages or things like that, surges, they've had some issues in the past.
We're not really using it as much anymore, because we added for our laser vision retention, which laser vision is not available. Uh, we added for our software accounting, and that's all on the cloud now. Um, then we added our email exchange server, but that is being in my Office 365, which is cloud-based. So really, we're not even using it that much, we just need it for air outlets, technology, intra-net access, so. All that can be done with a virtual server, it saves us some money that way.
Okay, do they charge you by storage size or not?
And then is that like to recoup data? Is that like, I ran into, ran into that problem when I used to have an offsite. I run into data where you couldn't recoup data like in blocks a week or a day. You got it, you got it all or nothing. So you really gotta watch when you.
Uh, access systems are IT people, and they're the ones that have to read Saturday for us, so I'm not sure how they handle that.
Good.
That's a good question.
Yeah, we gotta look into that, because otherwise, you know, you run into a situation where you might need a, uh, to look at a bill or something, but you're not gonna get that. You're gonna get the whole ball of wax or nothing. At least that's what I ran into, so I got rid of them. And I went back to having it on the site, so.
Okay.
I made a note to check.
You did that, perfect. Flip the page over, we're setting up planning for our comprehensive plan update. 2010 is when we did our comprehensive plan, we're 2014, it'll be two, 15 years, we're looking to next year to get that process started. This is a refresh, this is a complete overhaul. Uh, we're still looking at about $30,000 to have that completed. But the city has changed, the direction we're building has changed quite a bit since 2015. So we need to refresh, take a look at that long-term planning and see, you know, where are we seeing the growth? Uh, we may need to talk a little bit more about stormwater management, our flooding flood resiliency, and how that comes into play with what we're looking for, planning for future growth. You know, so that's in there as a budget item for next year.
And isn't that a requirement, too, on the comprehensive plan?
It's strongly recommended.
Because we used to do it every 10 years, didn't we? But we kinda got off track with the whole thing.
They see comprehensive plans good for about 25 years, but they want to do a refresh. Uh, because when the planning commission's looking at zoning, and they're looking at parcels and doing things, it, it should reflect what the comprehensive plan is giving them for ID.
Is that 15 years or 25?
Uh, 25 for the plan itself, but it's 15 years from now, date, and 15. A lot of it depends upon what is the city seeing for growth and the, or the changes occurring.
Thank you.
Uh, and then economic development aspect of it, uh, we have it here for Oakview subdivision phase two. And flipping over, it was also, uh, the West Side Estates phase two, and those are the two projects we're working on to help develop. And it's to the council at the end of this year for approval, as we work through those second phases on those two projects.
Oakview is your?
It's subdivision, I'm in.
Yeah, and then the West Side Estates is.
It's Joe Hill Grand.
Okay.
Uh, so phase two will actually finish out the northern loop, uh, with the road potential to go east and west, to extend closer to Bishop's Farm, I guess, that way. So eventually could send that way, but it connects onto Bailey Drive. So provides another inlet, outlet to there, uh, that's important for us to have that for traffic pattern. Um, so part of the conversations we'll be having with Oakview is their stormwater management plan, while they're handling that. Um, Steve Petland is interested in providing us with some park space, so we're gonna work with him on how to do that as well. Uh, so that would be something that we can help address, maybe the parks plan, and probably work through that way. Because that southeast quadrant of town is not a park unless you talk about the dog park, which is kind of in discussion or in the process.
Center Park and Bon Park.
So you'd cross the vital ways to get to them. So this would be a nice location for going in that area, and I foresee that area developing quite a bit more. So we've got those two items. Airport, we're talking about the resurfacing projects. Um, again, this fiscal year is part of that, uh, start. And then next fiscal year is when that'll probably get finished up, because it'll split. Thankfully, you know, construction season's July 1, and that's another fiscal year, so I'm guessing as to how this process play out. In either case, it is a 95-5 reimbursement up to what we have for matching funds. Uh, we'll go out, go for bids, see where we're at, financing-wise, we did. Split that a little bit into resurfacing, and then you have an alternate to include the tile lines along the runway if the funding comes in appropriately or the cost for them. Then what's next, what we have, taxiway extension, again, that's a planning project, if we can get some additional hangers built on the left side, uh, to extend the taxiway over there, and again, that would be a, um, airport program, grant project that we would work on. So I may be a year early on that, and that may get pushed back a year. So a lot of those just depend upon what we have for funding and the projects that will be approved by the FIA. So, fire department's next.
Uh, first project we had is the parking lot paving, and we looked at doing that last year, but we did get sidewalk to get that to agree with what we wanted. The view just for parking areas, some trainings, we can do it out there. So the next one, yeah, it's. 176 replacement, it's getting to the end of its life, span as far as the way they consider the life of them. That truck, that price could vary a little bit on that, the way the market's going, it's just crazy on it right now. That truck we use for city rural, and it's a cross pumper and tanker combination, so it's pretty used for truck for us, so.
Kevin, what's your delay time on, once you order one to get one?
About, I don't know, anywhere from 18 to 20 hours.
So it would be something where, uh, this fiscal year, as we talk about our budget, we'll budget for it, so we know it's coming. But the, uh, timeline for it to be delivered will probably be 20, fiscal year '27. But if we start ordering it, we, we need to make sure we have the funding stream set up in place.
We could be lucky enough to find a chassis already in line that would fit our needs, and that might speed things up a little bit. From when we bought the last truck, it's under received, it ran up over $150,000. If you ever got the same truck that day, so. Uh, next thing is rescue tools, um, delivering, going to battery-operated. They're handier, they're quicker, um, the power rating on is really good now, so. That would be nice to have, we'd still keep our gas power, and then get rid of one we have, and just have a battery and a single gas then, but then. Something that wasn't on here that just kinda came up is, where you'll be looking, same bunker here, and we're looking at a grant, and that grant fell through, so.
So that's how we need to get information to be on.
Yeah, we'll get some information on that. We may have some money that we'll hopefully use and we'll add on it, so.
As you look at these sheets, uh, you'll see the expenditure, what we just paid the cost to be. The funding sources are projections as of right now, too. I'm not 100% positive on all the funding sources. And we'll work those into our budget as we go through this process, but that gives us, have an idea where it could come from.
When we order that fire truck, that's not if, I think it's a when, but when, when it's done, when do we pay for it?
One day we'll pick it up.
Pick it up, okay.
The library is next.
So, uh, both of my projects are dealing with HVAC. We replaced the air conditioning, the main air conditioning unit last year. Um, we still have one air conditioning unit to replace, but they did a whole bunch of work ahead of time, but all we needed is the unit. And then they attached it to what they already did, um, to replace that. Uh, so that, and then the other one is the boilers. Uh, I do, uh, we are looking to move forward with that. I have contacted Black Hills to try to get on there. Rather than forgetting a rebate back, um, so I will get contact from her back in January, the earliest, but I'll hear back from her, um, about that. But, uh, so that is, those are the two things that, um, that I'm looking at for library.
All right, Doug, first iteration.
Yep, so first one here listed, dent bark and steel replacements, that's actually supposed to be removed.
That's a future consideration.
Yeah, it's something that, you know, we, it was, I think we're, we're okay with leaving that one, um, hanging in the back end. And, um, the Turtle Park Backwaters, Culvert, um, that is kind of not if, but when. We have to deal with it, we won't know when, it's kind of beginning failing, and it's a project that's a little bit bigger than, um, my knowledge can, can give a whole lot of info on, so just something to keep in the back, when, when that's, um, system fails, we may, we may be, um, scrambling to try to figure out how that we're gonna replace it, so.
I do have a meeting with Amy Voweska with IOs, uh, she helped us with the meandering wetlands, stuff, and less stuff. I'll meet with her on Thursday to see if there's some funding available to go after a grant to help with that project. No, she is with Iowa Department of Air and Land Storage.
Uh, flipping over the, the Grand Avenue rail extension, so that one's, you know, kind of already in, in the works. And planned for, as well as park, park truck replacement, that's actually budgeted for this fiscal year. Um, our, just as a quick, uh, overview of our parks, our park trucks out, we have two trucks that are both, um, over 10 years old, one of them, they're both probably 12 years old. Uh, one of them is, is the street department's old truck, and then the other one is ours. Uh, the one that we have is two-wheel drive, the one that, uh, we got from the street department is equally as old and rusting. So we need to get one this year, obviously, to start, and then in a few pages, you'll see the other park truck replacement, so that would come down in a few years. When that way we can kind of stagger a little bit and not have two old trucks. We don't need two brand-new trucks by any, by any means, but we definitely can't, can't go with the two old trucks that we have right now for much longer. Um, and then Seabert Park Playground Replacement. So this one's kind of a tricky one, because Seabert Park has a little, is a little bit up in the era as to what maybe we'll do long-term there. But the playground, um, is, is an aging 30-plus-year-old playground that cannot be, uh, we cannot give replacement parts for it. It's an old square post system, and all the new ones are round posts, and so. It used, that's what Turtle Park used to be as well, with a square post, and so when you have a part that goes bad, the only way you can ever get a replacement part now is if you can scab one off of an old junk, junked-out one, and there's not a whole lot of them left anymore, so. That one is on the books, um, if it goes, it's gonna have to go, or if something major happens to it, it'll have to go. Um, so it's still kind of nice to plan for it, even though we may not know the overall plan for Seabert Park. Um, my guess is that a bigger picture, Seabert Park, Seabert Hall renovation would come later, probably a year later than what the playground replacement would be, so I think it's smart to have the replacement in there. If we need it, we can hold off, we'll try to hold off, essentially. Um, flipping pages, you got park truck replacement, that will be park truck number two. And, uh, you can, we definitely do need two trucks, uh, we typically have, um, somewhere between two and four part-time, some are employee and, uh, some are seasonal workers and, and JJ, of course, so we, we need at least two, two vehicles. And sometimes we are beg, bar, and stealing a third one from the street department if, if need be. Um, okay, so Bon Park restroom and shelter renovation, there is, uh, that's, this is. That number is supposed to be $100,000, I'm not sure.
Your updates did not change on it, so I don't know why.
Okay, yeah, I was gonna say, because these, some of this is, this is with the numbers, too, so that's supposed to be $100,000.
I'll get this updated for the.
Yeah, Bon Park's one?
Yeah.
Yeah, I haven't, it's all, it's all on that website, so, but.
Well, it'd been the same on my website when I looked at it.
Okay, it went through as approved, but, so, yeah, I'll, I'll double-check, but, yeah, mine are, mine are a little goofed up here. Um, so that would be $100,000, and that would be a restroom expansion and, um, upgrade to make them ADA compliant, as well as replacing the shelter that was, um, blown down in the tornado a couple of years ago. And so that was, I do have, like, the, the, the updated one has the rendering and updated, um, budgeting on that as well. And so Josh Demmer did a, did a rendering for us on that one, and he estimated to be about $100,000 for the, for the restroom upgrades and the shelters. And then with that, um, I know we'll have to speak with Chad and the, and the water department on electrical upgrades as well, because that building is in dire need of electrical upgrades, whether or not there's an expansion or, or not. It's, it's old, old, old-school electrical, so that'll be a little bit bigger with a little bit more span than just the, just the restroom and the, the shelter, but. All, all definitely necessary.
Is that all encompassed? I mean, it, it's gonna be one building there?
It won't be one building, because we don't believe that we can paint the building. It'll, it'll look like two buildings that are trying to look like one, so we have one that's just gonna be basically built up next to it, overlapping a little bit. If the rendering was on here, you'll see it, so when we update it, you'll get a chance to see it. Um, it looks, it'll look really nice. Uh, but, yeah, it was, it was decided after going back and forth that it, we thought it'd be better to, um, have it be a separate piece rather than try to connect onto it.
And it'll go north?
Go north, yeah, so the shelter will go straight north. The, the restrooms will, will get expanded out about five feet, and then the building will go, so. The, in the building itself, doesn't, existing wellhouse doesn't need to be expanded, because there's some space, there's an overhang there, so we would just block off, block the wall and expand it out, so if you were to see it, it would make a lot more sense. But essentially, it's an overhang that could be turned, could be blocked into an, an expanded restroom. And then therefore, we have, we would move the, the doors to the sides, so that would allow for a better, uh, entrance and exit, and then ADA accessibility. Because right now, if you go in there, they're about this big, and they're all dark, dingy, and not ADA accessible, so. All of it's kind of needed, and actually, the good thing is that the building has room on that side, well, to the north and inside. If we needed to go inside the building, we could knock down that wall as well, but, um, because there's just a storage room that we, um, we hold, hold a hose in there right now, that's kind of an entrance into Chad's stuff, but we, we lock it off separately for, for our garden stuff. Uh, but that, that building has potential to be expanded and renovated fairly easily, I think. And I might add, the reason it's hard to add on to that building, that building is a block structure that used to have a flat roof on it. And then we put a pitch roof on it, so we kind of, sometimes actually, I didn't do the word of the name, but in the day, so that makes it even harder. We'll be adding some sublaze stuff, the original flat top had a little bit of pitch to it, so it's just kind of, it, it's tough to try to match up what's there because of the building that we have. The building's fine, it's just the way it is. Yeah, matching it up is gonna look like you tried to match it up and failed, so it's, it's easier to have it be separate and have it be in the same theme, but not trying to match it up to that. And then the, uh, the next one, and, and actually, that one would be, that one would be in 2025, so it's listed in 2026, but that one would be trying to be done next year. And then last one for me, actually not the last one, second to last one, Central Park Basketball Courts, pickleball court. So the basketball court, long story short, the basketball court is, um, it's old, and it is, um, it's getting some sinkholes. It's got some dips and some, the old central school foundation is underneath the back, and so we've had a few, few incidences where after a winter surprise, there's a sinkhole, we filled it in with gravel, we cold-packed it in, cold-patched it in. And it works, but it's not necessarily anything ideal for a basketball court, for an athletic surface. And so that really needs to be, um, to be looked at. The hoops are old, uh, the surface is uneven. And the, the tennis courts, um, they're not terribly old, but there are a few issues with them. And the biggest issue was that we built those tennis courts about a year or two early, because right after we built them, essentially pickleball boomed. And so the, 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 the game of tennis, it leaves a pound, doesn't get played all that much, but pickleball is in high demand. Pickleball courts are in high demand, so this gives us an opportunity to renovate the basketball court, and we have, currently, we have two large basketball courts. We can shrink that down to one basketball court, take the tennis courts out and put four pickleball courts in, and so we kind of, we do push tennis off to the side, but there's not a whole lot of tennis that gets played, a lot of pickleball, and there still is basketball.
Are they still doing tennis at Turtle, right?
There's still a tennis court at Turtle, yes, so the, the one court is still there. The four, four, four pickleball courts at, at Central would be, will be utilized for sure, as well, we don't wanna get rid of the basketball, we just wanna make it safer. And so this would be, um, this was back in 2014, I think, maybe I put it here, 2012 or so. 2012, 2013 is when Central Park got its last facelift, that was when we, we did the restroom, um, we did some sidewalks, and there will be some sidewalk ripings on this as well. And then the skate park was added, so the upgrades have happened, um, but the basketball court would be the last thing. Just seems to me like the time would be to renovate the, the whole thing right now and add the pickleball, except for that. And, um, Nicola Rosa has, and, and the updated one, it's on there, Nicola Rosa from Bear Graham, um, had put together a really nice, um, rendering plan. And, uh, it's, it'll be, it's in there, it's just not listed on here, and that, that's estimated at about, it was estimated at about $200,000 project for all of it, including sidewalks and everything. I think that number will drop a little bit, because we, we pared it down from five courts to four. And the one good thing is that we can utilize the existing lights that are there on the courts. We can just kind of revamp the actual legs of it, so. That would be 2026, looking forward, looking at that.
And then the last, I'm sorry, can I ask you a question?
Yes.
Okay, when we put in the pickle car, pickleball courts at Turtle, we were given a really nice grant from that gentleman. Okay, is he still doing that, or can you only get one for?
He, he is actually moving to Manchester. He's building a house in Oakview Estates.
Oh, wow.
I have actually just been talking to him the last week, trying to.
Encourage, yeah.
He, so how he did it, he, and he had given away well over $100,000 for pickleball courts. He gave us $20,000. We were actually the very first one that received the grant. He was the owner of Mintex Citrus in, in, uh, in Monticello. And so he, he is in the process of selling Mintex, and so in order to kind of distance himself, he's moving away in, like, Manchester, so he's moving up here. And so he has given away a bunch of small, bunch of grants for pickleball court construction to small towns. I'm certainly gonna try to get him.
Okay.
And so I started the conversation, um, I don't know if we can keep getting out of Mintex, if it's still is something we could get in the back door on that one or not, but it's worth a shot.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I was just curious, what he was giving.
Yes, it's a good, good guy.
Thank you.
Good guy, yeah, it's kind of funny, he's moving here now, too, so.
Yeah, that's nice.
Yeah, fun is Tim doesn't run out. And then my final one is the Turtle Park Playground Resurfacing. So that, that playground is, was, was installed in 2016. It is a poured-in-place surface, and it looks really, really nice when it's done, but it doesn't have longevity. Um, if you go to it, you'll see there's, there's issues with it, um, there's, we've had issues with it for years now. There's kids will pick up, will pick at it, um, there's, you know, the dinosaur paws, where there's a seam, it starts to come up. On the edges, it has shrunk, and it has eroded a little bit, and it's, it's no longer as smooth as it should be. The time is coming. I won't do another poured-in-place. I don't, I love the way it looks, I just don't like the longevity of it. For instance, the, 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 um, playground at Central Park is tiles, it's rubber tiles. And that was done years before, a couple of years before that, and that's still completely perfect. It's not as customizable, but it will last a lot longer, so I think it, I think, um, going forward, I would definitely build that route uh, for just about all of them. Um, it's not cheap, it's, um, it's probably gonna be at least $50,000, but that should last 20 years, where rather than the eight, 10 that this one, this one has lasted. Um, so why, Central Park is now 12 years old, and we have no issues with it, and imagine it'll last quite a bit longer, so. Um, just, just one of those things that kind of lesson learned, it looks really nice, and it was really cool when it happened, but. Not my, not my, uh, I don't give it too much of an endorsement long-term.
Gray, will you run the first part?
So the only things I have in the next couple of years is to update, continue to update our fleet. Uh, first thing you're gonna see is the K-9 unit, um, that vehicle right now is what I would consider operationally unsafe. Um, actually, it was told that it was involved in a flood at one point. Um, the transmission's been replaced twice, the AC doesn't work, um, it's, I think it's 2004, so it's definitely met its life limit. Uh, the costs of a K-9 vehicle, just having outfit one a couple of years ago, is initially higher than a normal spot car. Um, also with that, what you'll see in those years is, um, I'd like to continue to switch to the hybrids, the officers like that, they're great on gas. But with that, some of the equipment that we've reused over the years has become obsolete. Uh, the radar units are more than 20 years old, those need to be replaced. Um, the scanners, well, the officers now use to scan IDs and, and registrations, those are over 10 years old. Um, so you'll see the increase, you know, I think it was 65 before you guys put in to do the last port explorer for years more. But in turn, what I decided is if we're getting into vehicles, some of that mandatory equipment should be replaced at the same time. So that increase would be for coverage of the vehicle, and then the radar units and the scanners, so by the time we get, you know, over the next four, five years, we get a vehicle, they put it inside of these every day, is upgraded as well. So after those upgrades, that we can go back and reuse those things, you know, as they progress, but a lot of it needs to be replaced soon rather than later.
And I can send you a check into some funding options, too.
Correct, so, uh, when we had, when we started the K-9 program, K-9, the United gave us a grant. Um, just as long as you have work with Dog, and you can prove that meets all the qualifications, uh, under USPCA or one of the other trainers, almost like a guarantee. And then, um, I'm looking with a couple of outfitters, so one being Carl's out of Des Moines. Um, they're tech that I've kind of talked to to get some of the prices and decide what we're gonna look at for a bill. Uh, put me onto a USDA grant for a vehicle for a long, so. So I'm gonna test the waters with this one, considering it is a more expensive vehicle. I don't know what those numbers are yet, I'm still waiting to get all that, but the number that you have, the, you know, my estimate of it, without no, no grant funding available, we're not going to, that's top dollar, about what it cost us in bid, I put our, our newest one, so.
Right, Jason is on vacation in Florida right now, so I'm looking at this fairly quickly. Right, Jason is on vacation in Florida right now, so I'm looking this fairly quickly here. Uh twenty twenty-six street tour project, again, we'll start funding it, that's Anderson Street, going from Main Street up to Butler. Um potentially uh trying to get to Howard, trying to remember which which one to stop that.
We go to Howard.
We go to Howard.
Next, go to Howard and pursue.
So, yeah, so that that's the big one, again, we're over two fiscal years because it is through construction season. That's the next big street project we have. Um the twenty twenty-eight is just phase two of that street project, so Anderson Street is gonna be two phases. Uh depending upon the finance and where things are at, I do have a year in between those. Just so we can get our cover of the local sales tax money that we use for that as well. Just to kind of get the cost back to where we can. Uh the biggest challenge we see is every year we delay, it's an eight percent increase in construction costs, uh on average. Would you, just maybe using a hundred fifty thousand dollars a year, excuse me, thirty thousand dollars a year, wait five years, so it's a hundred fifty thousand. Thirty thousand a year for crack ceiling, uh we'll go through and figure out the worst places in town we need to. And you thirty thousand dollars worth of crack ceiling every year. We have East Main, Millinoverly during the spring, you know, again, that's a hundred ninety thousand dollars, we have that. Uh funded, ready to go, um so hopefully we'll see them start that, probably first thing in April. Probably one of the first projects they do out of the gate. Uh the big thing for next year is replacing the street sweeper. Um it's earlier than what we normally would like to on the schedule, maybe. Depending on how long it takes and the ability to get it turned out to us. The challenges we're running into right now with this one is electrical, uh we've had a lot of gremlins in it. Uh we're spending a lot of money trying to get those fixed and figured out, so. No, we bought that brand new in two thousand seventeen.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, uh the jetpack truck is. And that also costs a lot of money, but the streets sweeping, cleaning streets costs a lot. That's a corrosive environment where we're sweeping up everything out of the, oh, we pick up sand in the spring, let's get some sand in there. And you're just blasting it in the back of that truck, it's just a sandblaster at that point, you're eating up all the metal, really else, but right now we're having some issues with wiring. Uh so we we spent quite a bit of money on that, so that's three hundred seventy-five thousand, these are about to trade in. Let's see what we can get, we prepped them now a little bit more on that, but um we'd like to get moving on that one because of the cost.
Has there ever been a study done to kind of compare if we didn't have a street sweeper? What kind of wear and tear we have on everything downstream from us, so like, the treatment facility, water treatment facility.
Well, those wouldn't be a concern, it'd just be the condition of the streets with cigarette butts and debris people put out there. We use a street sweeper behind the leaf pickup, that's plenty of leaves. But I I couldn't tell you what the cost is not to do it. Um we can look at, you know, lessing the amount of times we're using it. Uh but renting one is an expensive proposition too.
Or maybe, or if we looked at maybe doing, I mean, they have the skid loader versions now that you can run out there, the skid loader.
The brooms.
Yep, and the brooms and and pick them up, they have them on job sites.
You need dump, you need dump trucks and everything following. Instead of having one person running a sweeper, you're gonna have three or four people involved in doing that.
Yeah, uh we use a regenerative vacuum sweeper, uh there's Pelicans, which does basically what you're talking about, gives it a hopper. But we'd have to stage dump trucks every so often to dump them into.
By looking at a dump truck that we already have, two people operating it. And and the cost of a sweeper on our skid loader versus three hundred twenty-five thousand, you know, we're, I guess, I'm just asking.
Manpower issues, is that what you're concerned about?
Yeah.
Well, we probably wouldn't use the the skid loader because it's gonna be about eight foot room, whereas a sweeper, we're we're going ten, twelve, twelve. Little side rooms and stuff like that. Um we haven't set up right now, everything's swept into the middle and sucked up with the broom, I I I can see the benefit there as well though.
So, you know, the other thing I was thinking with the the attachment, if you did an attachment, you know, if you're on a. If you're cleaning up a corner of a street where you repaired something, you know, it's probably a heck of a lot easier to get that in.
Well, they'd be great to have. You know, to see them clean like East Main during the street project, that, you know, they're making a lot of dumps in a short, long time.
Right.
When red leaves would be, you know, you want to go ten feet and you'd have to be dumping.
But we still utilize the 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 rack, you know, back to do the leaves and follow behind with that.
We're looking at some other options as well because it's, it's expensive.
But it's just, I think we need, I mean, the street being cleaned is a benefit, so I I think.
Well, get the sand up in the spring is probably one of the bigger things, maybe you'll get some sand off the street. Um motorcycles, bicycles, I know those are challenges for some of those people. Uh even for some people driving Broncos, they have a hard time keeping their.
But I do think we could look at utilizing it maybe a little less and, you know, spacing that out a little bit more.
Yeah.
It also helps with your storms or your structure.
That that's what I was kind of curious about, so let's say hypothetically speaking, we just said that we're packing up your places. Now, what what is that gonna cause us for issues somewhere else?
Well, caused having probably two or three guys in this past weekend when we got three into the rain with all the leaves coming out of them. With all the storms or intakes were backed up. I know Greg was in for an hour and a half just to get up some of the big lakes that had formed on the street, I mean.
Yeah, my my biggest concern is gonna be about the D N Rs that are required. Yeah, with the floor, floor and stuff. And then of course, everything we sweep up has to go to landfill because that's contaminated. So that's the challenge there, um and we'll talk like that more as we get into budget.
I'm just kind of curious, when, right, wrong, or whatever you wanna say.
Yeah, and and so twenty twenty-seven, we're looking at another flower wing replacement, actually, that's a salt truck. No, it's bombing. Uh the challenge we run with salt trucks, we run it ten years, uh because of the corrosive environment they're in. We just can't seem to stay on top of those.
Can you lease those, salt trucks?
Yeah, is that an option?
It becomes an issue with our auditors, um and whether we need to go through like our bonding attorneys. Because it could be a pseudo loan, um that was one thing that they checked just when they were here last week. Um we do have one where we're we're buying some police equipment over time, um. And it's kind of one of those areas where you're right on the line of whether you need to get a bonding attorney involved in, and it would be classified as debt against the city by leasing it.
And I wonder what, I mean, not even assault trucks, park trucks, police cars, like what can we lease and be beneficial compared to owning, being more beneficial?
Skid loaders, tractors tend to be more apt for scale of leasing and stuff like that. Uh since COVID, I'm not sure how well they do those. I know when we looked at the the first skid loader we ever bought, we looked at that option and we found out the time. If if we bought it, we could turn around and sell it two years later and get almost the same amount of money out of it if we did that. Because the ultimate discount looks so great, um but that's changed now. Two thousand twenty-eight is the snow go, that's the snow blower, uh that'll reach the age, which would be time to replace that as well, fifteen years.
That was last, was it last winter or the winter before that was so bad?
Uh, winter before, I think.
I picked the winter, it's it's all of them. Well, I know there's been several, so.
We had to replace the wiring harness because it got salt and smell.
The first time we used it.
Yeah, we did have some issues with the turbo and they, it came from the manufacturer. They replaced one that had a twelve-foot chain on it, the operation, and the chain linkage was an issue for us, that's the reason we went to this version.
Put an oiler on it, we have, we've done everything good.
The the challenge is we run it about fifty hours a year, and when we run it, we run it hard.
I'm sorry, thank you.
So, yeah, so that's, you know, again, fiscal year twenty-eight. Uh so the equipment replacement schedule's in here, twenty-nine is uh the replacement of the salt truck, yeah. And two hundred seventy-five thousand is kind of what we're, we're replacing right now, and those later, we'll be up eighty, I think, very. So, uh wastewater is up next.
Uh the first page you'll see is what we started on for, with after the last two big tornado and some long power outages that. Having backup power for the lift stations became a priority. Um so we were looking at putting fifteen thousand dollars a year in to start putting transfer switches into lift stations. So we could eventually install generators when, when some grand money showed up. So we're looking at, Dave is working right now on getting three generators installed with some grant money. I think the the overall cost is about a hundred and fifty thousand for the three lift stations, we'll have to see how the grants play out.
Okay, yeah.
But we targeted the three biggest problem areas, that if the power goes out, we can't stay ahead of them. What we have to pump them out with a jetpack and call in, you know, Billy Downer drove in to help. Pump them out, but so that's just a a budget item, the fifteen thousand dollars a year, just to stay. Put transfer switches in at what we got. Um the next page. South Bird Street San Dairy, this has been on the books for several years. We've replaced all the sewer north of the tracks from the Marion Street Bridge to Buckstar to East Main Street. There's just one little chunk that goes down South Bird Street, it gets just about to Oney's Wood Nickel. And it shoots in the backyard into a big vault, and then flows underneath the railroad tracks. It needs to get cleaned up at some point, we just kind of keep, as long as it's still working, we just kind of keep pushing it down the road. But at some point, it's gonna have to get.
It's a line that we're gonna have to televise again at some point, figure out what's going on, finishing it is. The challenge we have is the fact it goes underneath the railroad tracks, and it's not just a single set of tracks, it's a wide area. So it's all gonna have to be bored if we do that.
We have to work with river than that?
Yeah.
What is there?
It would like to keep its, it it drains that whole, that whole quadrant of town, up through the hospital, all the way out.
A big deal.
So that was our big eye on our infiltration area that we had replaced all that sewer, and now that's that one little section we have left. To get to that lift station behind the C shop.
Yeah, but you're gonna go to the backyard.
It needs to stay on the books, but as long as it's still working, we just kind of keep bumping it a year or two. But like Tim said, the longer you bump, the more it costs, but we want to get it back into the street. You know, down to the railroad tracks, we'll have to bore underneath, you know, it'll be a couple hundred feet, and then get it down to the lift station, so. Just something to keep in the back of the mind that someday it's coming. Uh the sewer camera replacement, we've all discussed that, I see Tim's got that on twenty-six budget.
Well, we're budgeting this week, your twenty-six, that's what's coming into play, so it'll be July one.
I think that, you know, that's a fairly high priority for us, we need to get that back in place. There's a lot of stuff that still needs to get camera, especially coming to all these big street projects we're doing. And then this, the outfall of plants, that's another one that's, we've kind of bumped down the line. Uh I think we bumped it up forty-five thousand this year because it's been in the the C I P for so long. Um it goes from inside the fence to the river. Uh we root, we've started roots on it every two years, it's an old eighteen-inch clay maybe that goes there. And it was run through the trees, we've cut down all the trees, we're roots on, but every year it's just. You know, every six months, it's just chock full of roots and.
Just the cracking of the.
Yeah, you know, whole play, it's been there, I think that was the original outfall when the plant was built in. What, fifty-eight or whenever, the first, so.
It wasn't.
Were you there?
No, I was looking at you, maybe you were.
No, he's not that old.
So it's, it's another one of those things in the C I P that as long as it stays good. You know, we can keep bumping it down the line, but at the time when it does happen, we'll have to build a new line, a new outfall right next to the old one. And then at the end, you know, make a one-day switch over, but it's something that is coming.
What do you figure we spend on that every, roots on, everything cleaning?
Uh would be three guys, eight hours, so twenty-four hours, times two, so forty-eight hours of manpower. So.
And that's per year?
Per year. And someday, you know, it's old play, it collapses someday and it's. Then we're just blowing out the manhole and running it to the river, but. Then it becomes a high priority and has to deal double the cost, because you're not gonna get somebody in here and do it right away, but. One of those.
But the slip fix, we could never do that.
Not, not with not knowing what the future holds for a wastewater plant, I don't, I don't want to reduce the size of it, but. I mean, maybe with some of the new blow-up ceiling off liners, that would be an option. But the outfalls taking some pretty big beatings in the flood and, you know, the head wall and. It's it's holding its own right now, so we just kind of keep bumping it a year or two down every C I P, so.
As we keep rot- sawing it, we can figure out more and more stuff like this.
Yeah, it's just one of those things, roots on that one, and then that one that goes under the railroad tracks when they go with.
Yeah, we want to make sure we're.
We're gonna be in bad spot, because you can't just throw a pump in it and throw a hose over the railroad tracks and bypass bomb, so.
Underwater, by the way.
All right, so first, you can see there is just a um cleaning inspection of the bowling street tower. Um we gotta keep those maintenance that are in the years, I don't see that, but it's in here. Um booster pump upgrade is something we talked about last, like last year at this time. And we brought it up a couple of times, um the need to replace that booster pump structure down by the river. Um the the metal ball that it's in is, the floor is failing. And the building is old, um so we're looking at ways to get rid of it altogether, because it keeps getting flooded down there. Um I just got an updated number from Ryan actually on this project, which is not even close to what we have on here. Um his new figures on what it is now, we just, this estimate was like a year and a half ago, you know, with this number. And the new number's, I think, one point seven million. So it's it's like Tim said, if you keep taking things down the road, they just get more and more expensive. This is the one where we would uh change the whole town into a pressure system, um which. Right now, with the way our town is growing, um the need for more pressure now is greater, the town is growing more and more. Uh we've pretty much reached our limit as far as we can go, because unfortunately, our Johnson's in a hole, so everything's uphill. So by doing this, we put two B M E pumps at, well, one of them's seven, one of them's all four, but in addition to the buildings. Um all that fun stuff. So that is that one, that's a big, same, uh Ryan and I have, have already had one meeting with. With some uh homeland security folks that deal with flooding and moving current infrastructure out of flood. Going to areas, protecting them, um they're gonna continue to do so, and see if we can find some funding sources in that direction. But that's always either through my funding, so that's always a fun experience. Uh the next one's the fire hydrant painting, um for years and years and years, we've gone around power washing, drainage, and power washing, drainage, and power washing, made it our fire hydrants. To the point where paint doesn't really stick anymore, it all just kind of crumbles off of them. Um if you remember, two years ago, I had our tower painted, Oney and Founding went out and blasted a lot on the main drags. Uh we put a zinc primer on them, that uh, what that does is, once the paint kind of chips off or flakes off, that zinc. Um protects the the iron from rusting. I think they did a really nice job, we originally were budgeting twenty-five thousand a year for this. Um but with working with Stan and his guys, they'd rather do it every other year, to do more at once, because then we get a better price. Because for them to mobilize the town to do the little bit that we can do, it really isn't cost effective for them. So the more we do, the cheaper the rate is per iron. So that'll be another, why they're coming up, um again, this. Um, again, this will be making drag areas where the irons. Um, they get pretty beat up by salt, just splash them off. And then every time you take a cap off or work that iron, we we flush each iron every year. Fire department guys use the irons, um, they get chipped up, they get banged up and that's more of a. Uh, that protects the iron, but it also looks nice, it really does look a lot better where we fix the iron any compared to where we haven't. Uh, the next one's still kind of posing that booster pump project. It's a little bit more updated numbers. And we get into building and so well by um, we hit that fifteen year life. Cycle, we need to pull the wells, um, replace the pumps and. This this well, we replaced the casing when we did the uh, well, one by project for the nature of the wall. So the casing really do, when you think of life of a well, so this would just be pulling well, but you. Pump and and well hype inside of the well. North Third Street Water Main Replacement, so there's a block and a half of water, we'll call it two blocks, so water main up on the. Third Street, that is the same situation as where I'm on Anderson Street, where we have dug every joint of this water main up. Um, we've done certain holes multiple times now, um, it's just not in good shape. Um, and knowing kind of where we're going for street projects, um, or Third Street really doesn't fall. In the ten year plan, it doesn't seem so, it's something that we really need to look into addressing. Just because there's just a lot of leaks up there, if you drive that street, you're all go go see. Pretty little patch together. Um, and then I feel that with our wall seven, that well we need to get pulled, just same thing, fifteen year maintenance on that one. Those prices, um, Tim and I kind of forecasted them a little bit higher because we know everything keeps going up. Uh, based on what we did this year, a lot of six, so it's here we did wall sixes, well, we pulled that one and replaced all the low parts.
How many wells have we got?
We have five. And then we get to the Hundred Creek Tower, that would just be a an inspection, so we drain the tower, they go up, they clean it out. And then do an inspection, ensure the coatings, everything and it's said the tower's looking good. And then, uh, the last one. This is a, for our source water protection and. And when we're identifying flood mitigation stuff back when we were hammering down and getting the weather projects going. Um, the need for funding to entice farmers to put more power crops on. And um, just any other tech management that we can help be part of the projects, you know, we got. The Okie Valley folks and and all those people who want to do projects and if it's a project that would. Be helpful for us, then it'd be nice to start by giving money to be able to uh, help make a bigger impact there. And those those things that we're a little. By doing those things the correct way, um, practices, we can help to reuse our nitrate load. And we also get other credits for doing things like that, but and then we can also help slow water down, building into town. And then the very last one, well four, the well four. It's fifteen year life, so let's get that unfold and.
So again, this document is a living, breathing document, it will change it, update it as you go through, but it gives us. A starting point as we go through our budget season and start working on our budgets, trying to figure out what projects we can accomplish. And which ones are necessary to get it done regardless.
Okay, thank you everybody for all your hard work on this.
Um, something else I'll throw in there, I mentioned to Tim when we met. Um, I keep a binder on my C I P stuff, once we finish them, you know, they go on the complete site. And I've been here since oh eight, and I completed site just in the water department, there's a stack of paper about that thick. So by doing this planning, it's 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 a really good step, so hopefully keep moving forward with these plans. All of us moving forward under any gap.
Well, we want to continue to have good, safe drinking water and. And we're get and get um, make sure we get that stuff out of here safely as well as the waste. So, thank you gentlemen and ladies. Alright, next, uh, we have, is there anything else to add to this that you might?
Any questions from the given source? Okay, again, as you'll review it, we'll continue to talk about it, it'll be brought up again in the budget work sessions.
Okay.
And parks is the home of a bird. Like a pickup truck than this.
Yeah, yeah, well, the pickup trucks for this fiscal year is the last one, we purchased about five trucks is what we agreed to in this budget. Uh, and then next year is when they're looking for the second truck. Um, we looked through the equipment schedule, we have, we have about four million dollars worth of equipment, maybe a little bit more than that. We try to keep our purchases flat, so about two hundred fifty thousand dollars a year in equipment is what we try to purchase. So we're not seeing any spikes in a year where we might have a million dollars or a million dollars of equipment. So, yeah, right now, uh, that's what you're gonna see yet.
Here's the please. Alright, alright, uh, engineering agreement for Grand Avenue Trail Extension Project.
I have asked Jason Laird for parent engineering agreement for Grand Avenue, so we go out for bids with this Friday, uh, we need to get started very quickly, it is a D O T project. Which means it has requirements and standards, uh, go through your bid letting process. It does take some time, this will be on the agenda for Monday night with the council to approve. Uh, if you recall, we do have a two hundred fifty thousand dollar cap grant, uh, drop to alternative program grant. Um, it's an eighty twenty match, uh, so we we do have to match twenty percent of this under grant. Uh, the funding for this project between the grant will also come from our local option, sales tax, sidewalk trails portion of that. So we have the funding, we won't borrow any money here or anything like that for this project.
So just to be clear, this is gonna be the sidewalk that'll go next to the Grand Ave Extension, keep the kids off the road.
It'll connect from Acre Street and tie into the trail down there on Acre Street by the school, go to the north to the end of Fairview. And then it turns into that sidewalk that was completed.
On the west.
On the west, on the west side.
From west side.
West side group. And there was quite a few people that were walking around, you know, someone asking about street lights up there, uh, we're not gonna put those in until we get the permit.
Right.
Just to make sure we're not in the way.
Now, if only we could get the nice ladies that walk in the middle of the morning to use our nice trails. I know, trying to be nuts. And I love it when they wear dark clothes.
Yeah.
As I say, or at least. Yeah, 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 there's been a couple of times when I'd be like going somewhere and I might look down to grab something with drink or something like that and look up and there's.
Yeah. There there's a group.
Yeah, sidewalks don't work for them, I guess.
Oh, there's signal box at that point, you know, stand by side by side. Do you have any questions with Jason on engineering?
So when will this go out for that then?
Uh, well, we gotta have the engineering.
Engineering agreement, you're working on the agree agreement, okay, now I.
Oh, the agreement I prepared it. Sort of the.
Oh, here it is, yeah.
Uh, so then we would vote on this on Monday. And whether or not we move forward.
I'm used to having a computer coming with everything on, so I apologize. Okay, alright, next Airport Runway Rehabilitation Project Update.
Just to give you an update where we're at on this, uh, for the F A process, we do uh, have an agreement with Kirk and Michael. Working with them on putting the engineering agreement together, F A requires that that agreement be reviewed by a third party. To make sure that it is compliant and reasonable. Third party agreement is being reviewed by fair gram, fair gram, there is a charge to review it. Uh, that is eligible cost under the the agreement that we have. So that's an eligible cost, you'll see a bill coming from fair gram to review. The engineering agreement that Kirk and Michael is going to prepare for us to move forward with. But I wanted to give you that uh, update on that, uh, we have, I think they want thirty percent planned completion by. Like January, so.
Alright, any questions? Okay, uh, engineering update, so do you want to go first, Jason?
Sure, I think the really, the only thing we really have going on right now is commerce port out there, paving was completed last week. Trying to be done on one, trying to be done Wednesday, and then we'll get, once the rain kind of gets out, if you care to get the water drained. They'll finish all the, the back door grading and get everything, so it drains like it's supposed to. I mean, what's been done out there right now is just kind of knock down the piles, flats, remove the work adjacent to the street, so, um, I think. We should be, we should be in good shape there, but we did get all the, all the concrete work was done last week prior to getting the first rains out there.
Where are we at as far as day one going on?
Good question. Nobody knows.
We've, we've gotten a return sign development from them, so I think they're working through their funding and.
Getting stuff put together, but I haven't heard anything. I know that they're still working on it, I know they are interested in it, it's just. Waiting for a site plan to come through, supplying the, the site plan on that, um, and then proceeding with construction, whatever it is.
No other questions for Jason, okay, Ryan?
Um, East Main Street, the CM sent the draft and special stuff with Tim and Aaron and Dorsey today. Just a few things to follow up on that, but based on our review, we got through all kind of the close out stuff with the D O T. So right now it tend to be. Um, acceptance and the number twelve meeting. Special assessment proceeded by the next meeting then. And then with the D O T process, that acceptance is a. That really is a family damage, that didn't actually happen until they conclude their audit.
Okay.
Be few months.
Okay.
We did prepare the decision request for reimbursement to go out and just have four danger in those same signs, so. Pretty close to substantial completion, but there'll be D O T audit on Andrew problem next spring. So that U T says for the law difference in the standard city closeout process.
So does that delay, that delays then us sending out assessments?
We have, the city has that acceptance on, that's what we're trying to, the acceptance on next calendar year, the acceptance of work. But the D O T said we can't release retention until we do their audit.
And I think we ran into that on the last leg of it, is that we had to wait until it was final exceptions before we could send out the assessments, but. Let's follow up with Dorsey and and see.
So that would be where we kick out the bills to them.
Yeah.
To let them know, this is what you generally have to pay.
Yeah, because we don't get it out to them prior to March.
Um, we have to have everything to the treasurer's office by May thirtieth.
If we don't, it doesn't, it's about to go on, the next year's taxes will be a year out.
So that's another reason to accept D O T, that we're gonna look at the scheduler audit before they have that form. But they don't want to sign that form, we'll counsel them.
So we accept the project being completed.
Yes, Tuesday.
I have to accept the project being completed before we can send out the assessment bills.
But because of the the exorcists of the D O T process, we just have to make sure with our um, our attorneys that we're, we're doing the correct steps. So.
Get along the government.
And there's very specific, we're also having a special code or a special assessment code.
That's three percent, right, on maximum one dollar change, so it's a thirty thousand of a change. That's soon out there after acceptance.
Okay, any other questions for Ryan? Alright, um, we'll go on to the next thing, Kevin, you want to go first? For staff updates? Or is there anything else, or do you guys all done since you all talked to us? Okay, you don't need to tell us anything else, but okay. That's all you're getting, okay, I'm I'm cool with that, everybody else is.
I didn't hear him too.
Yeah, Tim, you were quiet today.
Yeah, that sounded like a, I can keep on. Probably a whole lot going on, we got an apartment building, West Clinton, you know, a lot, ready to start it on concrete on that. Um, hoping to start a addition on their. We got all this contact registration to do January first, got all that sent out and then. Real park and red third inspection they sent out. Say every two years.
Now, what happens if somebody fails ground law inspection?
Well, it's a self inspection.
If there's an issue, I'll just say, uh, they send an inspection firm, tenant complain, we'll do the process. We we get involved at that point, and if they fail that inspection, we could pull their rental license. And unfortunately, tenant can't live there because then they can't rent that house out. So it it's something where we try to work with the landlords, we try to work with tenants as well, but yeah, ultimately, if it fails, you can't reflect it.
Until it's brought back up.
Is there anything that would trigger us to do an inspection besides a tenant though? Okay, that's what I was hoping, okay, yeah.
If you see something desperately terrible when you drive by from the outside.
Almost like a wellness check type situation, I think.
Anyway, alright, uh, anything else you need?
So, since it's been so dry, there is no way of really knowing this, so well. Tim and I are looking at the roof today of the wall for.
Jim Hines.
So about like four or five years ago, the valley was leaking on the roof up there, um. We thought we had it fixed, well, our last rain event, we didn't, or the caulking and everything that we did must have dried out or something. But it leaked pretty bad this weekend. Um, so Tim and I went out and kind of looked at stuff and he's already calling contractors on his list. Um, it's got the decorative steel shingles on it. Um, and there's a lot of issues with those and nobody really wants to mess with them. Um, so we're continuing to, he thinks he's got at least one contractor to come look at it. And see what we can do, um, but it did leak through to the point where it. I had to, it was coming through the vent in the ceiling, driven down like on my control computer and stuff. None of them were damaged, but so I pulled a big hole in the ceiling to make the water come out where I wanted it to come out, so it wasn't gonna damage any equipment. Um, and then further. I guess we'll call inspection, Tim and I were looking at other parts of the building. And it looks like it was getting under the steel shingles for quite some time, there's some facial boards that are rotten. There's some other things that we're discovering while looking into this, so it may be a bigger.
It's our new, our newest building.
Is it the shingles or was it how they were put on?
That's to determine.
Okay.
Um, alright. Our personal thing with the shingles.
Okay, good to know.
The way they're built, they they go on like siding, so they have these, they have little holes in where they clip together.
Oh, yeah.
And we're. Tim and I are under the assumption that. After being up there for, I think, at least twelve years old. And you know, those holes have all been plugged up with debris and 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 whatnot, so again, draining the water out of the way is designed to do.
Okay.
And then we thought it was just in, we're thinking now it's both valleys, because there's a valley in front of the building and that valley on the back of the building. Um, the back of the building is different materials, um, the only place in the whole building has got sheetrocked in the office. Um, the glass board and the rest of the building, the one back corner, it looks like there could be moisture above that too, so. We're gonna further investigate that as well.
So you're thinking reshingle it or?
At this point, I'm, I'm, this is just assuming, I'm, I'm, when we go out there and say it, probably better off just a new road. And it isn't material.
Throw steel on it?
Steel or, or asphalt. Um, this is the material that we put on, it was more expensive than you built it. Um, at the time we put it up, everybody, that's, that's kinda like the craze, was that decorative steel shingle look, and it's supposed to be a fifty year roof. Um, and it's, it, there are more damages, we open things up, then I think that's about the only route we can go, that way we can reassess how the flashing's all gone and everything.
Uh, is, is there like, uh, any, like. Like to do a recall and stuff, is there anything going on with this?
But what all these companies do is something different than windows and doors.
Right, right.
They have a disclaimer somewhere, hidden somewhere, somehow.
Of course, okay.
They can't get you on that, they're just gonna say, well, it wasn't installed correctly.
Mm-hmm, I'll get you.
So then we can go down that line, um, but I think.
I'm sure the shingles look great, it's everything underneath that's bad.
Yeah, when you look at the building, you would guess it's got an issue.
Yeah.
Cause I mean, I mean, they're steel.
Right.
They just look like asphalt shingles.
Okay, thank you.
How soon can we expect some sort of a number to know what it's gonna cost to fix it?
Steve should come one, who's gonna be here later this week, about Thursday or Friday.
So Steve Brohmmer is the only one that said he'd even come look at it, most of the contractors wanted him to.
So more than likely not like council meeting coming up?
No, no. Especially if we get doling as long as.
But is, is it something we probably need to get done before winter?
It'd be good to get it done as well, yeah.
Or just buying some umbrellas or something.
I just had Amish, uh, quote me out on their condos and on my house, and they're very itching to. So I got a contact number for you if you want to.
Everybody goes, let's just jump in the bed to get in.
Work on the deck of shingles or replace?
No, this would be steel.
I guess that would be my next question to you guys, of, I mean, it's a big building and residential, drive by it in the daylight. I mean, I'm fine with putting steel on it, I, I really would be, but I just don't wanna do something you guys aren't. Cool, this, the design.
They have a decorative now, it doesn't have the.
The shine.
It doesn't have the shine, and it doesn't have the screws, it snaps, snaps together and.
Yeah. And I, yeah, I like the look of that stuff.
Yeah, that's.
Really good. More expensive, but, um, but yeah, I just try to better break that, one bit of news to you. It's not a small review.
Thank you, the update. Alright, anything else we're around then?
Just remember, we're meeting on Tuesday next week.
And you said you guys have a meeting for Flood Coalition or something, I heard. I couldn't get the date on my.
Wednesday, November thirteenth. Is it starting at six o'clock? I think it's six o'clock, between center.
Okay.
And, and that's going to, when we talk about the flood resilience, you know, things that we're working on right now.
What day is that again?
Wednesdays.
This Wednesday?
Next Wednesday, oh, thirteenth, so I'll remind you, get after the council meeting.
Okay, alright, I couldn't get the date.
And then I, I did set this out there, uh, this is a film that is being shown, shown here at the, uh, theater. There'll be a group of farmers talking about that afterwards, panel discussion. It's being hosted by the McOco River, uh, Watership Management Authority, we are a part of. And so that, that is on November nineteenth, uh, doors open five thirty. Um, and so this is a innovative film that they were able to show here.
We're doing music. Alright, can we take a picture of that, so I can.
Let's say there's a QR code on there.
Alright, um, Brian, anything? Have any deer been shot yet by the bow hunters?
Not that I'm aware of, we did have, uh, Scott Clancy and his life commended aid talk to us about. A depredation, um, hunting on the pumpkin park, pumpkin patch area. That'll be for you Monday night, uh, they have some of your D N Rs willing to come, take out down there, so. Cause that is impacting their, their operations financially a big time.
We had five deer in our garden last night, so that'd be a review.
I had, I had six of them jump into the patrolling garden here last week, and the stuff that we did, we picked and found. I've never seen it that close to the house before.
Yeah, so this conversation will continue, uh, next week with them asking for permission for, I think for the new couple of weekends, and trying to take a PD round of the area.
What, what means, do you know?
Bow and arrow.
So they have to fill tags or something?
Complains behind houses.
Those are conversations.
Bailey Drive?
Those are conversations.
My biggest fear about hunting, coffee loaded area.
Well, I'm not sure, like discharging a firearm in the pocket.
Yeah, yeah.
My bad shots end up with deer laying in funny places.
Yes.
As long as they're up to my house, then I can just hang them up in the garage, so, oh, I'll go over, I gotta get the garage first.
Mary Ann, okay, so do you have anything?
Yeah, I received, uh, phone calls and, um, concerns about the property crops from the library here in town, and.
I got the same phone call, and I turned over to him, told him to call him.
Right.
That, Tim, not this time.
Just out of curiosity, with our city code, the North hands are kinda strapped with that situation, but is there something that we can do that if a house is vacant for a year, even if it's got power to it? That it's a violation in our code?
No, that's not the way our code's written right now, uh, Tim Hines and I will meet with Jim Peters on Friday. Uh, we're gonna talk about the nuisance properties we have right now, and a lot of different things. The challenge is, I understand that house, it looks horrible, but we can't tell people how to paint their houses.
Right.
Um, I get it, we, we all don't like it, and it's on a busy street, if it was on any other street, probably wouldn't have any complaints on it because people see it often.
Is that the one, really do just enough?
Just minimal, yeah, minimal, yeah, cause they do have hydro, they, they have water source, yeah. So, you know, and then I've had complaints on some of the commercial properties, well, commercial property's treated differently than residential, and. For a number of years, we have business downtown, and they have powered and have watered and have sewed and have any occupancy, it was over twenty years, and there wasn't anything we could do on it.
That new ownership?
It does, we'll, we'll see some changes now, but, uh, it's a challenge. I get it, people don't like broken stuff, but, um, it is property, right?
Right.
And we don't all live in the same way.
There's no broken windows, there's no barns running, they have one like that.
Broken window, and that was our front porch, which doesn't require windows, but, Tim, did you fix that or?
Yeah, you're cleaning the glass, I took that, I need to.
Just took paint off.
Pulling windows up, I think you took one to pull them off.
Yeah, patch the roof, cause there was an issue around.
Oh, I've got it for siding, I've caused a backside a couple of times, which, which always go back up the tap there.
But I haven't looked past it since the street project got done, but on East Butler Street, and beside Swiss, did that one ever, did he ever finish siding it?
Yeah.
It's not quite done.
Big gains over this year.
I knew there was gains, but, no.
I just sent him a letter, cause his permit has expired again, so.
He's getting nervous.
I mean, he did a lot compared to what he did in two years, whatever.
Yeah. Okay, we have, alright, any other questions or anything else, Joe?
Well, the, the, just wanted to bring that up and kinda see if there's anything else we could do, change or.
Alright, in the conversation with them too, and again, I know we're also happy with my answer, but, I guess about it.
Tony, one thing that we forgot to mention, we did get our health insurance renewal rates in, uh, they came in with an increase. Increase of twenty-four percent, um, so we had a broker in last week to meet with employees who take insurance, talk about that. Employees do pick up fifteen percent of the cost, single we cover, but employees pick up fifteen percent of the cost, but. We've had a couple of good years with increases, so.
The biggest periods were decreases.
We were about due for an increase, um. Again, this year, I got them too.
I'd have been fine if they'd just increased a flat rate in the last three years, it's a two decreases, that a big jump of increases.
You know the cost, I, I mean, you don't have to say it out loud, you can email me the cost of just a single employee getting insurance and then going to, with a spouse and then with kids.
Yeah, I actually had that, give me a second.
Thank you, Perry. Thank you, Kevin.
So for a single plan, uh, for next year, it's five hundred thirty-four dollars a month.
Yeah.
A more single?
Yeah.
That's cheap, it's not a minor.
That's double, mind me, if I'm just a single, where. You said five hundred?
I'll tell you right now, insurance companies work better with bigger places, anybody that's got over fifty employees, anything less than that, they don't even work with it.
Excuse me, well, let me update that a little bit, it's five hundred eighty-one dollars eighty-three cents. Uh, for family plan, it's one thousand seven hundred seventy dollars and seventy cents.
And then we also offer the employee and spouse, and then employee.
One thousand seven hundred seventy dollars, seventy cents. And the plan we are on, uh, we buy, so it's a three thousand, nine thousand, three thousand, max out about a percent of nine thousand for a family. Um, and we, actually, excuse me, that's the deductible, maximum is nine thousand for an individual, family's twenty-seven thousand, but we buy that down to three and nine. So we are at the very end of our current plan, we can't drop down to further, uh, out of pocket deductibles with the same plan that we have. Uh, we did look at some eighty-eight or A C A compliant plans, and they are not as good as our plan is currently. And they actually cost more.
Yeah.
We, we are on, uh, we did look at having over fifty employees, what that plan cost would be. Um, we can't get quite the same plan, and it would save us a little bit, but then you're, you're changing your prescription vacations and everything else. So it, it doesn't benefit, um, for us to change at this point, so this year we will keep it the same way, but we will keep an eye on, and mine went up a lot more than that.
Yeah, so this year, we'll keep the same, but it may be something we'll have to look at next year, depending on what comes back up.
And we did budget for a fifteen percent increase, and because our plan renewal is January one, uh, we have a half a year, so that's the reason fifteen percent is, we're covered, we're, we're gonna be okay. We'll have to make some changes with the budget.
Anything else? Um, we are, just, uh, thank you for covering for me the other night, thank you, appreciate that. And, um, we are working on some things, I don't know if you've seen Out of the City, that we've got some fun things coming up for your kindness. Um, we're gonna be having a free movie for the citizens, uh, to also, um, down at, uh, Castle Theater, it'll be the Sunday after Thanksgiving. And, um, we're just asking for free will donations for our food bank, so, um, hoping people will join us for that. There's some other things that have been happening during the Christmas fall and Thanksgiving, and just. Hope everybody's being thankful and stuff this month, so, um, I'll take a motion from Joe, second from Mary Ann, that we are adjourned, and we are adjourned, thank you everybody for.